Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Quincy City Council meeting with the City Council acting in its capacity as the special permit granting authority. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Kane. Counselor DeBona.
President.
Counselor Harris.
President.
Counselor Hughes.
Ed Hughes.
Counselor Liang.
Counselor Mahoney.
President.
Counselor McCaffrey.
President.
Counselor Palmucci.
President.
President Kroll.
Present.
Eight members, you have a quorum.
Eight members, we have a quorum. At this point, I would like to open Counsel Order 2001-094, which is the Home Depot USA Center Street, and we're talking about modifications to the permit. Before we begin with a presentation here before the council, Madam Clerk, would you please read into the record the open meeting law?
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And would you also be so kind as to read the advertisement into the public record for us?
So, the Quincy City Council, acting in its capacity as the special granting authority, will conduct a meeting on Monday, October 7th, at 6:30 PM in the great hall of historic City Hall, 1305 Hancock Street, on modifications to special permit number 2001-094, Home Depot USA Center Street.
You'll also read how the timeline of events leading us up to this evening, please, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. This Quincy City Council, acting in its capacity as the special permit granting authority, in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 40A, Section 11, Mass. General Law, the City Quincy Council is holding a public hearing pursuant to Quincy's zoning ordinance Title 17, Section 8.4 and 8.46, special permit, on the application of Home Depot Development of Maryland, Inc., for a modification of a PUD, special permit, City Council Order Number 2001-094, which was granted in 2001 upon the application of Home Depot USA, Inc., and then proposed new existing retail operation with parking for approximately 584 automobiles and associated improvements on approximately 15.75 acres of land in the industrial A-zone district. The SPGA has received an application proposal to modify the special permit to carve out approximate 3.424 acres lot is located at 465 Center Street in the industrial A-zoning district, as shown on Assessor's Map 3092B, Plot 12, Lot 1. Solely at issue at this public hearing is the removal of approximately 3.425 acres of land associated with the parking at the Home Depot site. You have all received copies of the application for modification and original special permit. Counsel Palmucci invited 1,275-plus area residents to a community meeting on July 16th at 6:00 PM at Lincoln Hancock School on the proposal, and would make correspondence part of the record. Present this evening is City Solicitor Jim Timmons, also Attorney Gareth Orsman, Sean Smith of RJ Kelly, and Rick Latini, the engineer representing the applicant.
Thank you kindly, Madam Clerk. Just set of, I guess, process flow for this evening, councilors. We will hear a presentation from the applicant. After the conclusion of the presentation, we'll open up for any public comment, and then we will open the floor to the council. So, I'm not sure, and I apologize, which member or members of the project team or the applicant's project team will be presenting here this evening, but I would invite you to the podium, and if you could, please state for the record your name and address.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Dean R. Orsman. I'm returning from Pierce, Pat Wood. I was in summer sweep in Boston. I am representing RJ Kelly, which is the best purchaser of the home depot site. I remember representing Home Depot as well. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. I have not gotten the signal whether or not the local television provider can hear you, but I can hear you. Are you good, councilors? Yeah?
Is that better? All right, I'll speak more loudly. In 2001, it all go with any of you were serving on City Council at that point, but Home Depot sought through this council granted special permit for the development on 15.7 acre site off of Center Street.
You're good.
That development was for approximately 136,000 square foot Home Depot store, together with the Garden Center, under the zoning in effect in 2001, and still under the zoning in effect today. The City Council is a special permit granting authority for any retail operation over 20,000 square feet.
The proposed use is the subject of a planning board special permit application still pending by RJ Kelly for a four-story storage facility with some accessory uses. But in order to develop that property, we have to remove the 3.425 acres and associated parking from the Home Depot site, as you approved it in 2001. So, we are here to ask for that modification of the existing special permit solely to allow that. So, in front of the City Council now is a request to reduce the parking. The reduction would be from approximately 580 or so spaces. It depends on whether we're counting the seasonal employee spaces to approximately 394, which includes seasonal employee. Under zoning, as I stated, the required number of parking spaces is 272. So, even if we remove the 3.425 acres from this development site, Home Depot will have well over 100 more spaces than are required under the existing zoning bylaw, and they feel that that is more than sufficient to satisfy their needs for parking. They have their own way of determining what parking is required, and for those of you that haven't been involved in retail operations, whenever you sign up a lease or make a deal with anything like a Home Depot or a Target, I can promise you, parking is one of the primary considerations. They always want to make sure they have enough. Home Depot feels like it has enough without these 3.425 acres. There's no other relief requested. If we take this 3.425 acre site out of the 15.7 acres, the Home Depot property, that is, all that is before you right now would still comply with all zoning requirements, dimensional requirements, use requirements, and what have you. This request is really just because there was an approval that approved a site plan showing all of this property that had a number of parking spaces on it, and that's what is being changed. So, I'm mindful of people's time. I don't know how many details people really want to hear. I think we laid it all quite a bit. We laid it out quite a bit in our permit modification application, and we have our engineer, Rick Latini. We have Sean Murphy and Rick Griffin, who are with RJ Kelly, to explain any parts of this application. And we have here a board that would show the revised Home Depot parking lot layout if you were to approve our request. So, at this point, I would ask for any questions, requests, entertain anything else that the City Council wants to hear before it can make a decision.
Counselor, before we go down that road, thank you for your comments. Are there any other members of your team wishing to speak?
Only if you would like them to.
Okay. Well, if there's no burning desire up front, we could possibly come back to it. This is a public hearing, so we afford the public an opportunity to weigh in. I'm just going to open that portion up or allow members of the public to participate, and then obviously you'll be available, and we'll bring you back up for questions. Does that work?
That works for me.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any, again, this is a public meeting. Any members of the public out there in the audience wishing to speak in either favor or opposition, please?
I'm in a big room, I'm late.
Well, we wait for the gentleman in the balcony. Is there anybody else out there that would wish to speak in favor or opposition? I'll do one final call, but just rest assured that located at the back of the hall in the right little atrium, there is a sign-in sheet for folks to weigh in, both in favor or opposition, should you not be inclined to want to speak into the microphone. With that, the floor is yours. So, our name and address for the record.
Thank you very much. I'm John Rodafield. Currently, I'm at 8 Jackson Street in Taunt, Mass., so there's no Quincy people here, but I was born in Quincy. I will be back in Quincy soon as those apartments are built up at Hospital Hill. Basically, this is a very good project. We're seeing parking being less and less in all the new projects. I just heard earlier that Target needs parking. Well, we got Target coming with like barely any parking to North Quincy. So, we don't really need much parking. Home Depot has too much parking. I, myself personally, don't think the city needs actually two Home Depots. So, this is good new growth for the city. This operator, I was at the public meetings, there were barely any people against this project, and this will be good new growth that will stay there. This will not be like Lowe's. They will not open up and close in five years. This will be a storage facility that will collect property taxes for the next 20, 30 years, so we can fix the roads, and we can fix the sidewalks, and we can give money to the schools. This is the new growth that we need. So, when we need commercial new growth, I know people might say that it's right next to the train station. I don't want to live next to the train station. When I was younger, the nice places, people weren't living over the train track, so they had to listen to the trains when they were coming by their houses. This is a great place for, you know, one thing I would like to say to the City Council, we have not passed the marijuana ordinance yet. I think this zone would be a good area also for the marijuana zone to be in. We're talking...
Mr. Rodafield, could we keep our comments to the item before us this evening, please, sir?
Well, I'm saying, as we're breaking up the project, I just have to say that, you know, I hope you listen to other people when they come here in the future for this same project. I mean, because right now, you're taking away, it's really strange. I mean, the one bit of advice I would give to the City Council here is, once you do vote on this, you can't complain about it, because you're basically giving up your power to the zoning board and the planning board. And if you do want any control on what is going to happen, then you should add a little amendment to this, saying that you have that sort of control. If you don't add that amendment, then, you know, you've got to hold your tongue and let the planning board and the zoning board make the right decisions, which they have been doing recently. The city is growing in the right direction, and we're moving forward, and I'm disappointed that there's no one sitting here in the audience. It's hard to complain and be active if you're not involved and you don't come and you don't participate. So, got the new guy from the Ledger here, so I was wondering who he was, and that guy's from the city, and Mr. Jackson from the Sun. So, I mean, thank everyone for coming, but I wish if anyone is watching, someone would join me here, because it's kind of lonely. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Last and final call. Anybody else sitting in the audience wishing to speak in favor or opposition? Again, I would remind you that the sign-in sheets are available at the rear of the room, so please use them as you see fit. With that, I would open the floor to the council and the councilors, excuse me, the applicant's counselor. Any questions? Counsel Palmucci.
Thank you, Mr. President. All right, Gareth, just a couple of questions. Does Home Depot have permits for the, do you know, I know you don't represent Home Depot, but do Home Depot have permits for the sheds that are taken up? Because I'm seeing parking shown here on the far right side, but it's actually like six sheds over there. Do they have a permit for that, or is that supposed to be parking?
I do not know. I mean, honestly, Counselor, I can't answer as to whether...
Okay. But based on this plan, it's supposed to be parking. All right. I won't ask you to pass judgment on it. Okay. And when you guys did your traffic study and parking analysis, did you take into account that those were otherwise occupied spaces? I mean, it's probably, what, six spaces, eight spaces, as best I can tell? Did you guys take that into account? I'm on up traffic guy.
Why don't we turn the traffic questions, which are beyond my expertise, to our engineer? Thank you, Gareth.
Good evening. Rick Latini with Howard Stein, Hudson Civil Engineer for the project.
Before you answer that question, I have a similar question that's probably going to be the same answer. So, that's on the right side. They have a bunch of sheds that take up, I don't know, six to eight parking spaces. Then, all the way on the left side, Home Depot now has an automobile rental program, as well as an equipment, like you can buy, you know, little excavators, and I think they have the scissor lifts. So, those take up that full left side that's shown here as parking. That might be 12 spaces, and then I don't know how many vehicles they have there that they're renting out, but I've rented a vehicle from there before. It looks like they have maybe four or five in the lot. So, that's, you know, maybe, call it 30, right, to be overly conservative, you know, and overly aggressive on what they're taking. Call it 30 spaces. Now, did you take into account those otherwise 30 occupied spaces when doing your analysis?
Yeah, actually, for the planning board, certainly, we did, because we'd actually broken it out for seasonal parking. Like, if they needed to, they could move it and stripe those spaces, so there's, they needed 272, and we actually mentioned that they had 364 if they stopped parking on some of these spaces that we see today, so.
So, they had excess of 90, 90 spaces, give or take?
Yeah, so like 90, they have extra 90, and I think it's 120-something if they got these things off of the spaces on the side you were talking about.
Okay. So, if you called that 30, then they probably lose another 25 or 30 seasonally when they have the plant sale out in the parking lot that takes up the other, where the sheds are on the far right, that next row is always where they have the plants and whatnot.
I do not count those, I can say, but...
Yeah, but so, so they have 90 to spare, as long as they're not taking 90 for all this ancillary uses there.
Yeah, I think the big thing, too, is we tried to mention that if they need more spaces, they have it. If it becomes a problem, they could make it not be a problem. And I, this place has taken a lot of my money over the years, and every time I've gone, they've always had excess. I mean, you could probably vote for that. There's always extra spaces there, so.
Yeah, there is. But I always see people on a, I know, taking my personal observations from when I, you know, that's the, I live equidistant between the two Home Depots, so it's just the direction my car happens to be pointed in, which one I go to. But I've been there when the, call it the bottom lot closest to the store is completely full, and then there's, I don't know, maybe 10 deep of each row that's taken up on the other side, which is fine. I mean, the bottom line for this thing, for me, I'll just tell you, is this isn't like the sighting of the Lowe's. It's not like the sighting of the other Home Depot where, if you guys are wrong, that, you know, the spaces are needed and they don't have this flexibility, if you guys are wrong in another location like Lowe's, people are going to be parking on a residential side street, and that's going to be a problem. And that's, you know, what I'm here to make sure it doesn't happen. On the other Home Depot, they could be parking along Willard Street, causing a problem. But here, you're so isolated, no one's going to park on Bergen Parkway, right? No one's going to park on Independence Ave, walk through the gate, down the parking garage five stories, over to Home Depot, then walk back up to the car. There's just nowhere that folks are going to park. If the parking lot's full, they're just going to leave. So, I mean, that's on Home Depot. If they're willing to kind of take that risk, and there's no negative consequences to the residents, I don't see it as a huge problem. What are the numbers? So, that's, so that's the difference in parking, but you guys are also going to have parking at the self-storage, right? That was something that was mentioned, I recall, at the community meeting, that even though you're taking the parking requirements out of the Home Depot permit, you're still going to have parking at the RJ Kelly facility. Therefore, if there really was a great need for parking, it would be there.
Yeah, and I think we're only, we only need 25 spaces. That's probably overparked. When you look at the Institute of Transportation Engineers, they'd only recommend 10 spaces or so for a self-storage facility, and these guys have actually kept track of a similar-sized facility they have in West Roxbury that has about 34 cars a day, so I think the parking spaces they have are probably overparked. And also, just so you know, on the lot closest to Home Depot, we're re-striping it to make it more efficient, so I think we're getting actually 50 extra spaces there, too, so it might, so it won't be, you'll still have the same type of maybe overflow during certain sales events or something you're talking about. But did you want to add to the parking?
Sean Smith, RJ Kelly Company, 55 Cambridge Street, Burlington. And just to add on to what Mr. Latini was speaking about, we've been in several long conversations with the Home Depot regarding their parking needs, and Home Depot actually has, I think it was mentioned before, an internal algorithm at the U.S. that's made up of a million different things, one of them, of course, being sales per foot, and they've integrated that, and they've told us exactly how many spaces they need, which is 390. We have 394 post-development. That 394, and their calculation of 390 includes Mr. Palmucci, Counselor Palmucci, all of those different, you know, scissor lifts, storage, you know, parking lot sheds, and all of those plant areas they set up, and they know exactly how much they need down to the space, which is, you know, quite a feed for them, but...
While I'm generally skeptical of math, I will say the fact that they've opened up two stores within a mile of each other, and they thought that was a good idea, which defies logic, but they've outlasted the Lowe's, and they've been here, they've been there for, you know, 10, 20 years now, and clearly, they're both busy. You go to any of them, they're both busy, so their math must work out to some degree, because they have two successful properties. I mean, one's for Milton, one's for Braintree, but that's another story altogether.
Yeah, I would love them to know more about it. I'm sure I could bug you with calculus, but they keep that very close to the vest, so. And, you know, just to speak to our side, of course, 25 spaces is more than enough for what we need, but it also incorporates that small retail element that we have there for hopefully a pack and ship if we can get it in there.
And have you done any calculations on what the potential increase in new growth tax revenue would be from your property versus vacant parking lot?
We, I can't tell you off the top of my head, Counselor, and I apologize.
Fair to say it's more than what it is now?
It's, I would, the value of this property is well more than it is as a parking lot developed as a storage facility, so.
Okay. Thank you. Those are all the questions I have, Mr. President. For the purpose of perhaps discussion or just to kind of move the ball along, I would move, hold on, let me find my notes. I would move that the City Council, acting as the SPGA, allow the modification of the special permit granted to the Home Depot for the existing store, City Council Order Number 2001-094, the modification being to remove the 3.425 acre parcel that would be sold to RJ Kelly, as shown on the submitted plans.
Put that in the form of a motion, sir. All right, motion made by Counselor Palmucci to accept the modification, seconded by Counselor Hughes. Any discussion?
I would, if I can, and if I, I'll just, in closing, just, if I can. So, obviously, this is the ward I represent. We had a community meeting on it. I invited 1,200 people. I think 10 to 20 came, roughly 20 about. The general sentiment from anybody that I've talked to who's raised this issue with me or lives in the neighborhood is that, thank God, it's not residential. So, you know, and I've told RJ Kelly folks this, too. Self-storage doesn't, you know, knock my socks off. It's not exciting, and, you know, but it's a Home Depot parking lot, also not exciting. So, based on the fact that, if anything, it'd be, it'd cause less traffic to and from that site by taking parking spaces away, the fact that it meets current zoning, which would require only 272 parking spaces by ordinance, they currently have 584 parking spaces, that leads me to be supportive of this. It's an increase of revenue, of new growth to the city's tax base, and most importantly, as I said, if they're wrong about needing the parking spaces, the neighborhood's not, there's no particular neighborhood or any neighborhood at all that's going to bear the brunt of the mistake of that decision by having people parking illegally. So, for those reasons, I'll be voting to support this, even though it's not that exciting. I know you guys seem to do well in the non-exciting business. I'm happy for you. I wish you success, but to me, not that exciting. But, okay, in my book. Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you, Counsel. And I would just turn the council's eyes to the clock. We have an ordinance scheduled meeting at 7:00 PM, so I know there's a motion made in second, and I'm going to suspend the meeting. We'll go to ordinance. We'll go through the regularly scheduled City Council meeting, and then we'll be back in our SPGA format.
I would like to call to order the Monday, October 7th, meeting of the Quincy City Council. Madam Clerk, can you, oh, yeah, Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Counselor Kane. Counselor Kroll. Counselor DeBona.
President.
Counselor Harris. Counselor Hughes.
President.
Counselor Mahoney.
President.
Counselor McCaffrey.
President.
Counselor Palmucci.
President.
Chairman Liang.
President.
Eight members, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt the meeting.
Oh, no, we already covered it.
Oh, okay, great. So, the items before us this evening in ordinance, I'm just going to read through them, are 2019-133, 2019-134A, and 2019-134B, all pertaining to easements and accepting of easements for Center Street. And I'd like to ask Mr. Timmons to come up to the podium to make his presentation and to help answer any questions he might have.
Good evening.
So, is there a question, or?
Well, if you could actually just run through a presentation of these three items, and then I'll open it up to my colleagues for any questions.
You want me to run through these?
The three items before us.
Three orders?
Mm-hmm.
Well, essentially, they're all before you. I don't really have much to say about them other than this. At the point in time, should you, as special permit granting authority, agree to the revision of the Home Depot permit and allow for the project that's proposed to go forward? In order for it to be properly completed, these three items have to be addressed. When Center Street was first laid out, and the development of Center Street was contemplated, it was well back in time before anything that's gone on there today existed, or was even on the drawing board. So, at that time, there were various easements, and the one that we're talking about in the first council order is 1959. And there's, then there's a proposal for one, a new one, this year, but the easement in 1959 was before anything that was contemplated in that neighborhood. Back at that time, or in the future as it was developed, was on the drawing board. So, they had some generic plans that were set up, including retention of the first easement that you're being asked to consider abandoning. It has no current utility. It would interfere with the existing project, and what the applicant is proposing to do in the subsequent two, or subsequent easement, is to lay out a more practical and useful easement, and in addition to grant rights, so that going forward, the parties in the neighborhood will be appropriately protected. And then finally, there's a little bit of an issue with some frontage that's going to be worked out as well through all of this. So, essentially, it's taking what was envisioned back in the 1950s and revising it so that it works for today's plans.
Okay. Thank you. So, just to clarify, in the first one, the abandonment of unused waterline easements, just want to clarify, the proposed 12-inch water main, like you said, that was proposed back in 1959, there is still currently no use of that water main, correct?
Well, I mean, that's, you're saying there's no utility today?
Right. I'm just clarifying that that's the case.
Yeah, and I'm sure that's something that Public Works is either documented or would document. I mean, that's not something I'm going to represent to the council. I really don't know what's going on. I know that in talking with the developer's attorney, the two attorneys have discussed this, and we think we understand things, but there's nothing there in regard to a 12-inch water main. Right now, there's a parking lot. So, the abandonment of something that's not being used is all I can really speak to. I don't know about whether this goes through into another neighborhood or anything. I'm assuming we'll get something from Public Works to document it, or perhaps the applicant's. It's perfect.
Again, Sean Smith, 55 Cambridge Street, Burlington. So, we, as a part of our diligence... So we, as a part of our diligence for this property, we did a, what they, what they call a, a Level B utility location where they energize, they basically magnetize the underground ductile iron main, and then they use a metal detector to locate it. And what we discovered is what matched the Philbin Plan from the 80s where, instead of passing through the property, it was actually turned and went down the former Center Street. And you can see that the city of Quincy actually does have a utility easement for drainage and, and water through that location now. So effectively, this was really just a paper water main that was never abandoned, and we're, we're just asking to formally document that at this point. And so that's the first item. The second is an appurtenant 10, 10-foot wide water main easement that was connecting to that paper water main. So effectively, there is no utility there, there's nothing for it to connect to. So I hope that clarifies your question.
Okay, no, no, that's helpful. Again, I just want to make sure because the way it's explained to me or the way I'm understanding it is that essentially, like Mr. Timmons had said, we're abandoning something that's not there. And I just wanted to clarify that that was the case, so.
Can I address?
Yeah, please.
A couple of other things. Just to confirm, we, when we did our due diligence, we did speak with the Department of Public Works and confirmed that none of, neither of these two easement areas are being used. To clarify, there are actually two easements, but that is in the orders before you. One's from the 1890s, and it was clearly not being used as well as the 1950 ones. But that, that's in the material before you. And finally, on the street layout and the easement, that is the third order, that's only because the frontage in this zoning district that we have to have to create this new 3.425 acre lot is 50 feet. For whatever reason, maybe our surveyor was too accurate, but the measurements we got out there was 49.5 feet. So that's literally to make up six inches of, of frontage that just was not laid out correctly when Center Street was actually made a real street. So that's the reason. Does that help?
Need to, thank you for clarifying. I'll look it up to my colleagues if anybody has any questions or comments. Yes, Counselor Palmucci?
Other than you might want to get a new surveyor, right? I would move approval of, or positive recommendation of 2019-133, the abandonment of an unused waterline easement on Center Street.
Okay, so there's a motion made for the, for, Counselor, just for the first order, 2019-133? Or for all three? Just for the first order or for all three?
I think we could do them one by one.
Okay, so there's a.
One by one. I don't want to cut anyone off if they have any questions, but I just forget.
Sure. Does anybody have any, so there's a motion to, for a positive recommendation for the first order before us, 2019-133? Is there any discussion on this order before we move forward? No? We don't need a second, right? So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great.
I would move positive recommendation of 2019-134A, which is laying out of Public Way on Center Street.
Great, so positive recommendation for 2019-134A. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the motion? No, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And I would lastly move positive recommendation of 2019-134B, acceptance of an easement on Center Street.
Okay, so there's a motion for positive recommendation for 2019-134B. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, at this point, I will close the ordinance committee meeting at 7:09 PM, and these items will be brought out during the regularly scheduled council meeting this evening for a vote.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Kelleher. I work, I work for National Grid, and so I am obviously in favor of this. And it is to install and maintain approximately 810 feet, more or less, of 12-inch gas main in Hollis Ave in Quincy, from the 6-inch gas main in Hancock Street to the existing 8-inch gas main at 67 Hollis Ave, all to which, to replace the abandoned 6-inch gas main in Hollis Ave.
Thank you, Barbara. Anybody else, I'm just going to continue the public hearing on this. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor or opposition? Favor or opposition? There are sign-in sheets located at the back of the hall, so please feel free to utilize them as you see fit. With that, I call this part of the public hearing closed. Thanks, Barbara.
Thank you.
And we will resume at 7:20. Good evening. We are back for the 7:20 installment of Council Order 2019-145, which is utility grant of location Mass Electric Verizon 137, 1 to 139 Sagamore Street. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor or opposition? Speak in favor or opposition? Last and final call, anybody wishing to speak in favor or opposition? Much like the first utility, there is sign-in sheets located at the back of the hall, so please feel free to do so. Mr. Pearson, did you, if anything, did you like to?
Set you, please, I'll set.
All right. With that, we call this part of the public hearing closed, and we will resume with the next utility at 7:25. Good evening, everybody. We are here for the 7:25 PM installment on Council Order 2019-146, which is utility grant of location Mass Electric Verizon 20 Furnace Avenue. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to speak in favor or opposition? Anybody wishing to speak in favor or opposition? Last and final call, in favor or opposition? Much like the two before, there is a sign-in sheet for you to weigh in, both in favor or opposition, if you don't feel like speaking to the microphone. With that, I would call this portion of this public hearing closed. We'll resume the regularly scheduled City Council meeting at 7:30. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the regularly scheduled Quincy City Council meeting for Monday, October 7th, 2019, to order. Madam Clerk, if you would please call the roll.
Counselor Kane. Counselor DeBona.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor Hughes.
President.
Counselor Liang.
President.
Counselor Mahoney.
President.
Counselor McCarthy.
President.
Counselor Palmucci.
President.
President Kroll.
Present.
Eight members.
Eight members, we have a quorum. At this point, I would like to invite the Council, as well as our friends in the audience, to please stand. Join me in a moment of silence, keeping those brave men and women who courageously defend our country in our prayers. If you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. If you could please, Madam Clerk, read into the record the open meeting law.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The first item on the agenda?
Honoring the Sons of the American Legion Marsete Post 294.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this point, I would like to recognize Counselor-at-Large Noel DeBona. Counselor, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. We're here tonight to honor the past year of awards and achievements for the Sons of the American Legion Marsete Post Squadron 294. Before I get in and introduce everybody that's here tonight, I just want to talk a little bit about the, the, what the, the Sons really do. Obviously, for membership, you have to be a, a son or a grandson of a, a veteran. So that's the stipulation. And what, what, what the, what the Sons have been doing over the last 10-plus years is, if you aren't familiar with the Flags of Veterans Island at Fort Square, which holds 400 American flags for living and deceased veterans, as well as over 450 bricks. So over the years, they've added benches and walkways up to the flagpole and continue to hold ceremonies for Memorial Day and Veterans Day each year. They have a lot of volunteers that help out with putting up and taking down the flags each year, including other veterans, other, other citizens of the city, people that have come back, like the 1966 Quincy High School graduation graduates. Also, which, which has been a huge help for the flag island is the North Quincy High School Junior Air Force ROTC and the Troop 6 Boy Scouts in Howes Neck. They've been a big help with putting up and taking down the flags each year. Obviously, they're getting ready for Veterans Day coming up very soon. Tonight, we're honoring the awards for this past year of 2018, 2019. And I'm basically going to read this off, and then I'll, I'll call everybody up here as well. Under the leadership of the Commander Paul Moody, a lot of these awards, you know, come into existence because of, of all their hard work with, with going to some of these detachments. Some of them are in-state, some of them are out-of-state. They do a lot of stuff for the veterans in general. So the Sons of the American Legion Marsete Post Squadron 294, in recognition of the Awards of Detachment Convention, 2018, 2019 Achievement Award of 100% Membership, 2018, 2019 benefiting the Operation Comfort Warriors, 2019 Consolidation Report, which contributed to the advancement of the Sons detachment of Massachusetts. We thank you for all your dedication and support for living and deceased veterans. I'm going to call everybody up here, and they could, they could speak about the accommodation. But we'll start with our commander here, Paul Moody. Come on up, Paul. I'd also like just to go in order. We have part of the Sons, some of them are dual members, which are also American Legion of the Marsete Post, as well as the Sons. So Robert LaFlore, come on up. I'd also like to note, my colleague, Ward 4 Counselor Brian Palmucci is also part of the Sons as well. So Brian, Brian Palmucci? Working together, right, Brian? Also, like myself, as, as part of the Sons of the American Legion as a junior vice commander. And I'd also like to note, as well as Bill Harris is the Sons over at the Nickerson Post. He does a lot with the Sons over there. He did, did a golf tournament, so Bill Harris. Thank you, Bill. You know, thank you, Paul, for all your hard work, and if you have anything to speak about, come on up. Just, anything else for the rest of the group here? Anybody else want to say anything? Everybody's, everybody's good here, so. I got it all in, I guess, President Kroll.
Tremendous service to our community, gentlemen. We really appreciate it. Counsel, would you like to take a moment and have a picture in the wall?
As long as you'd like to.
Counselor Hughes, yes, please.
No, I just want to thank the guys. When I chaired the Veterans Committee, everybody up there was so helpful to me, and they're a dedicated group of, of men and, and women. They're, the wives and the women at the American Legion who help dutifully every day. And I know that it's hard to get new members, to get new folks to come in and join and be a part of the team. So I think it's great that younger folks like Noel, and, and I'll say Brian's younger too, are coming in and being a part of the Legion. And I just want to encourage anybody out there who is in need of a service organization, a veteran, somebody who's returning, somebody who would want to join, to, to give a thought to the post, because it's such a great organization, does so much for the city, and, and you guys are really the backbone. And you could use a break from some service sometimes. Paul's like, yep. Guy's like, ah, yeah. But thank you so much for your kindness to me, for your kindness to the city, and for your kindness to your country and each other. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel.
Real quick, if I could, President Kroll, I'd also like to thank, he couldn't be here tonight, but he said his regrets is, Michael Norton is part of the Sons as well. I'd also like to thank a lot of the past commanders and present commanders over at the Marsete Post, is where we have our Sons of the American Legion, Larry Norton, Fred White, Jake Comer, George Nicholson, George Bishad. Stephen Dunley is also a dual member, is behind us.
And Bob LaFlore.
And Bob, Robert LaFlore is behind us, is a past National Commander, Marsete Post Commander, but they're also here tonight. So I just wanted to, to mention a couple of the other guys that really help out with, with instrumental part of, of opening up the post and letting us use it there. So with that, Counselor, President Kroll, can we take a recess?
Yes, please. We'll take a brief recess, and we're also joined by Chairwoman of the School Committee, Mrs. Lebo, and Kathy Hubley. So you're welcome to join us as we kind of corral in the, in the well. So we'll take a brief recess. Madam Clerk, if you please could, the first item on tonight's agenda?
2019-152, an appropriation for $8,500,000 for acquisition of 178 Old Colony Ave for Special Education and Learning Center.
Motion to refer to finance and public buildings? Motion made by Counselor McCarthy to refer to, what did you say one more time? Finance and public buildings. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda, please, Madam Clerk.
Number 2, 2019-153, an appropriation for capital improvement plan seawalls, $3,500,000 in supplemental funding in accordance with bid.
Counselor McCarthy.
Motion to approve, this is the monies that we discussed last week, and because our number was off last week, we went forward with the initial seawall funding. But I'd like to make a motion to approve the 3.5 to include a culvert study and also pumping station.
We're, just because, sort of point of reference, because of last night, of last night, last council meetings, how do I say it, basically the way that it was presented, we voted the original. Now, this particular supplemental is subject to the advertisement requirement, which I believe is.
Oh, okay.
10 days. So it has to go to committee, so it can be proper.
Okay, I understand.
Would you like to refer it?
Motion, yeah, to finance.
Motion to refer to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Counsel. Next, next item on the agenda, please, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance amending Title II, Chapter 2.92 Planning Board, Section 2.92.010, Establishment Composition, Approval, Powers and Duties. I'm sorry, Appointment. Powers and Duties.
We're reading.
Yep.
Thank you. This, this ordinance was, the idea of this ordinance was to add to Chapter 2.92 Planning Board in the section, to add the appointment of powers of duties for, I'm trying to say for alternates, thank you, that was a word that was, that was missing my placement. And the reason why we're doing, the reason why I'm requesting this, and Counselor Palmucci is, is also on this, on this ordinance amendment, is that the planning board has been having problems being able to make a quorum at the meetings, and we would just like to make sure that there's at least four alternates, so going forward that they'll be able to, present a quorum at meetings, so we won't have that problem going forward.
Motion to refer to ordinance?
Motion to refer to ordinance, yeah.
Okay. All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Counsel. Next item, please, on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number 4, 2019-155, a gift.
Motion made by Counsel Harris to accept the gift and send a letter of gratitude, seconded by Counselor Hughes. Any discussion? See none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
President Kroll.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members, the gift is accepted.
Next is number 5, 2019-156, a resolve.
Motion made by Counsel Harris to waive the reading on the motion, Counsel.
Thank you, President Kroll. Thank you, Counselors. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm honored, I filed this resolution to support the efforts of State Representative Bruce Ayers. Representative Bruce Ayers sent a letter this past August, and you folks have a copy of it, to Steve Pothack, the General Manager of the MBTA, urging the implementation of shuttle bus service between North Quincy Station and Squanum Point Park. The request came as the Wallaston Station prepared to reopen, and is a result of the success of the shuttle bus service provided during construction by Yankee Bus Company. As well as, as well, as we all know, development at North Quincy Station has recently begun and is one of the multiple projects that directly impact red line stations in Quincy. The North Quincy MBTA construction project has resulted in a loss of more than 600 parking spaces. While Wallaston coming back brings some spaces back to the, into the fold, it isn't enough to adequately make up for the loss in parking. The MBTA has offered some positive mitigation projects as part of the construction, and it's important to note that this request does not mean to interfere with any of that. But, the current mitigation plan does not go far enough to provide adequate relief for frustrated commuters. The DCR-owned parking lot at Squanum Point Park holds over 800 spaces and is very underutilized. The trip between the North Quincy Station and the lot is less than two and a half miles each way. The city and state have completed various projects in the area over the last few years to prepare it for long-term use, including recently finished extensions of Commander Shay Boulevard directly into the lot. Representative Ayers' letter requests that the MBTA work out a deal with the DCR and with Yankee Bus, or a similar entity, to provide regular shuttles along this route for commuters, as well as free or reduced parking rate, parking during construction. Not only does this provide a solution to the loss of parking, but could also encourage some commuters to utilize the Marina Bay Ferry, which runs through November. And lastly, not only that, the proposal can also relieve some of the parking congestion and issues in the North Quincy neighborhoods, as the parking regulations continue to be worked out by the city to protect the quality of life in our North Quincy neighborhoods. Again, thank you to Representative Ayers for his actions, and I ask the Council to support this resolution unanimously. Thank you, Counselors, for taking the time to listen to me.
You put that in the form of a motion. Motion made by Counsel Harris to accept. On the motion, Counselor Liang.
Yeah, I'd like to second the motion, but I also just wanna thank my colleague, as well as my Ward Counselor, as well as State Representative Bruce Ayers, for continuing to, you know, stay on top of requests like this to help mitigate the issues we have. You know, while I'm thrilled that Wallaston has opened, and it is absolutely a gorgeous station that is accessible, it does not take away and/or address and fix the issues that are ongoing with reliability of the stations running, the buses, the frequency, the time that they are running, and, you know, frankly, just the parking itself continues to be an issue at all the stations. You know, we are getting emails, constantly getting updates about the orange line and the green line, and I understand they're doing work on those lines as well, but the work in Quincy that they have been doing is still not done. It's far from over, and the impact right now is felt heavily still in the North Quincy area. So, you know, I'm thrilled that you guys are staying on top of that with them and making sure that they're being held accountable to continue to help mitigate essentially what's a commuting nightmare in that neighborhood right now. And it does impact the rest of the folks across the city. So, I'm happy to support this, I'm happy to second it, and I, you know, will continue to work with you guys to hold their feet to the fire. Thank you for doing this. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Counsel. Motion made by Counsel Harris, seconded by Counsel Liang. On the motion, Counsel DeBona.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to also be in support with this. You know, I know State Representative Bruce Ayers has been a vocal, you know, point person with the MBTA and North Quincy's T Station. He's been in the forefront from day one. I wanna thank my colleague, Bill Harris, in Ward Six, doing a great job with bringing this about to the City Council. You know, this is where this needs to be spoken about, here at the City Council level, to help out the citizens of the city. This also can help with the Marina Bay Ferry system, which comes out of Squanum Point Park. I mean, you know, down the road, I'd like to see that expand to our own system. You know, there's a parking lot there that's being underutilized, and you have all these different spaces with the construction at North Quincy not being utilized. So, it's a win-win for the city of Quincy and our residents to encourage ferry service and to encourage the mitigation of all this parking concerns. I mean, that's, I mean, when you talk about traffic, you talk about parking. Parking goes with it. And it's a little congested over there, and this would really alleviate, people getting to work on time. I was speaking to a citizen that takes the MBTA at North Quincy, and she told me that sometimes, even at Wallaston T Station, the train comes to her stop and the whole train is full. She can't get on. So, now it takes a longer process of getting to work. So, you have to get adequate time in the morning to get your commute, as well as coming home. So, this would alleviate a little bit with the parking concerns, getting to North Quincy, with getting to people work on time. That's, I think that's our job here as a City Council as well, is to speak about these concerns of our citizens. So, I'm happy to be in support of this. I'm happy that it's on the City Council's agenda tonight, and that we're speaking about it, helping out the residents and the citizens getting back into work. And also, the students. I've seen a ton of students go into different BC Hys and all these different schools, so it helps out with them as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Motion made by Counsel Harris, seconded by Counsel Liang. On the motion, Counsel Mahoney.
I just wanna also support Bill for bringing this forward, and Bruce Ayers as well. I'm a regular commuter, so I take the trains every day, and I am the first one to tell you if it's working, and the first one to tell you when it's not. And I call it the commuting game. And I see a lot of people on the trains. So, I do know that many people are utilizing the services of being able to use the commuter rail when possible, but parking still becomes a problem. And although we have a beautiful Wallaston T Station, and this is, this will help with the North Quincy parking, but the other problem that we're having is with the smartphones with the paying. There's seniors that use the trains to be able to go in town as well, do not have the ability to always have a smartphone to pay for parking, so that's a problem as well. These are things that, as we go forward and working with the MBTA, we have to be able to have an open dialogue with them. Their answers for things just aren't always adequate. And when it comes to this, I know that this was brought up when we met with them, when they originally were first starting the project over at North Quincy, but they really do have to work with the city to be able to help move people in and out of the stations and get them in and out of town, because they're promoting the city, and they're promoting the red line as an alternative use for commuting, but they're not making it as available. So, I'm really hoping that they listen to this and that they push forward and provide the transportation, the shuttle buses, because I think that would actually help a lot with the congestion over there while they're working on the North Quincy T Station, because it is very congested and it's dangerous in that particular intersection with all the work that's going on. So, I thank Counsel Harris for bringing this forward, and I do support it. And I would love to have the MBTA right back here again, just to talk to us, just about updating the things that are going on in the city, because we're gonna be going right through it when it comes to Quincy Center again. So, this isn't over, although Wallaston is opened and North Quincy is underway, but we have a lot of work still ahead of us in Quincy. So, thank you very much for bringing that forward.
Thank you, Counsel. Motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
President Kroll.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members. The item passes. Okay. Approval of previous meeting minutes from September 16, 2019. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. Communications and reports from the mayor, other city officers and city boards, and Madam Clerk has several traffics.
Ward One, add a stop sign at Mill Street, intersecting with Vine Ave, northbound and westbound. Add, do not enter on Stewart Street, 135 feet north of Southern Ottery. Remove handicap parking at 22 Vine Ave. Remove handicap parking at 25 Vine Ave. Remove handicap parking at 26 Stewart Street. Ward Two, add handicap loading zone at 28 Dale Ave. Add no parking east side of Chubbick Street, from Washington Street to South Street. Ward Three, remove handicap parking at 95 Montclair Ave. Add a stop sign at Hillside Ave and South Central Ave. Add a stop sign at Lincoln Ave and South Central Ave. Ward Four, add handicap parking at 53 Virchile Street. Ward Five, add handicap parking at 35 Carruth Street. Ward Six, add handicap parking at 20 Freeman Street. Add handicap parking at 109 Faxon Road. Add two-hour parking on both sides of Billings Road, from Felton Street to Tyler Street. Add two-hour parking on both sides of Billings Street, from Newbury Ave to Commander Shay Boulevard. Those will go to ordinance and advertising.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Quite a, quite a few. Any other reports from the mayor, other city officers, and city boards? Seeing, oh, seeing none? We're good there? All right. Reports of committees? Counsel Liang?
Thank you. Earlier this evening, we held an ordinance committee meeting for three items, all three of which had positive recommendations, so I'd like to just bring them out for a vote. The first is Order 2019-133, land, the abandonment of unused waterline easement, Center Street, I move positive recommendation.
Motion made by Counsel Liang, seconded by Counsel Harris. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
President Kroll.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members. The item passes. Counsel Liang.
And then we've got 2019-134A, land, laying out of a public waste, Center Street, I move positive recommendation.
Motion made by Counsel Liang, seconded by Counsel Harris. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
President Kroll.
Yes.
Eight members.
Members, the item passes.
All right. And last, we have 2019-134B, land, acceptance of easement, Center Street, I move positive recommendation.
Motion made by Counsel Liang, seconded by Counsel Harris. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
President Kroll.
Yes.
Eight members.
Members, the item passes.
Thank you.
At all. Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Harris.
Thank you. From Public Works Committee, this evening, utility requests, public hearing. Was held this evening for 2019-144, utility grant location, National Grid Gas, 67 Hollis Avenue. I move for positive recommendation.
Motion made by Counsel Harris, seconded by Counsel Hughes. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
President Kroll.
Yes.
Eight members.
Members.
And 2019-145, utility granted location, Mass Electric Verizon, 137, 139 Sagamo Street. I move positive recommendation.
Motion made by Counsel Harris, seconded by Counsel McCarthy. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
No.
President Kroll.
Yes.
Seven members.
Seven members.
And 2019-146, utility granted location, Mass Electric Verizon Furnace Ave, Pumping Station at 20 Furnace Ave. I move positive recommendation.
Motion made by Counsel Harris, seconded by Counsel McCarthy. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
No.
President Kroll.
Yes.
Seven members.
Seven members, voting in affirmative. The item passes. Yes, sir. Counsel Palmucci.
My apologies, but if I could, with the unanimous consent of my colleagues, go on the record as being in opposition of 2019-144, the grant of utility easement at 67 Hollis Ave. I voted, I voted yes in error. I believe there are still double polls, and the city of Quincy will not approve or support anything National Grid does until they're gone. So, with unanimous consent, I'd like to change that to a no vote. Thank you.
Seven members.
Seven members. Thank you, Counsel Palmucci. Counsel Mahoney, I believe you had an item you were looking for an update on, pending in the committee. Correct?
If I could, through you to the mayor's office, could I find out an update on the Commission for Disabilities? I've been getting a lot of phone calls, and they're worried, people are worried that they're missing communications, so they just wanted an update to see where we stand on that. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
And through you, Madam Counselor, we anticipate the letters of appointment going out within the next week or so, and a meeting to be set up within the month of October, early November.
Okay.
That process is going forward. We have a number of great candidates, including some recommended by yourself, so we're putting that together right now, and those letters will be going out shortly.
Excellent. Thank you very much for the update.
You all sat, Counsel?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Walker. Any other reports of committees? Okay. Presentations of petitions, memorials, and remonstrance. Counselor Harris.
Thank you again, President Kroll. It's with a heavy heart, I mentioned the passing of William Francis Dougherty of Squanum. He passed away on October 4th, beloved husband of Mary Duland Dougherty of 59 years, cherished Beloved husband of Mary Duland Dougherty of 59 years, cherished father of Kathleen Whitmore and her husband Stephen of East Bridgewater, Kerry Brown and her husband Edward of Quincy, James Dougherty and his wife Monica of Squanum, William Dougherty and his wife Mary Ann of Attleboro, Kelly Schola and her husband Anthony of Quincy, and Michael Dougherty and his wife Elizabeth of Mansfield. Sally Dougherty of, and Paul Dougherty is survived by 18 grandchildren, one great-grandchild and many nieces and nephews. Bill was born in Boston in 1937. He was raised in Jamaica Plain. He was a graduate of Cathedral High School and worked for the Edison Company for 30 years, retiring in 87. He was an avid golfer, adored by family and the folks who obviously lived out in Squanum. Family is very, very well-known. He was devoted husband and father, grandfather, and truly cherished the time he spent with his family and he'll be greatly missed by all who knew him. Relatives and friends are invited to attend, you know, Cohane's on Wednesday at 4:00 to 8:00 and there'll be a celebration of life at, at 9:30 at, at Cohane's Funeral Parlor and a mass at 10:30. Folks can make donations in, in Bill's name to the Wounded Warrior Project, P.O. Box 758517, Topeka, Kansas, 66675. Also, and my heart goes out to the Dougherty family as well as, I know a lot of the folks here who knew him and knew his family and those members of family, James, Jim, Jim and Kevin who worked for the city as well, his father and grandfather. Also, I don't have details. My heart goes out to the folks, some folks out in Marina Bay. Kathleen Palucci, who is not only a friend of my, my, myself and my wife, passed very seldomly, very, very suddenly yesterday morning and the folks that I've seen are heartbroken and I don't have all the details yet, but I just wanted to give my, my best to those folks out there in Marina Bay and, and all the folks who were friends. Kathy, Kathy would, you know, five more, five minutes before she entered the room, her smile was there first, so with that, with a heavy heart, thank you very much, councilors, for listening. Thank you.
Thank you, council. Certainly keep both those families in our prayers. Any other presentations of petitions, memorials and remonstrance, motions, orders and resolutions? All right. Scheduling of committee meetings you have in front of you, courtesy of my friend to the right, Jennifer Manning. The profile of the upcoming meetings over the next, you know, month and a half, does anybody need to add to that? Council Yang?
If possible, could we schedule a public hearing for Monday, October 21st, prior to the regularly scheduled council meeting, starting at, let's say, let's say 7:00?
We have, we do have one public hearing for utility at 7:25, just so you know.
Okay. That's perfect. Thank you. On two items, it's 2019-43 and 2019-125.
What is it?
43 and 55?
125, sorry. Excuse me.
7:00.
That's it.
All set?
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other scheduling of meetings? All right. Seeing none. With that, I would entertain a motion. Brian? Do adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. So, so move, but don't go anywhere.
Don't go anywhere.
We're going to take literally one moment and then we will go back into the Special Permit Granting Authority. At this point, I would like to continue slash reopen council order 2001-094, which is the Special Permit Granting Authority relative to the Home Depot site. When we left off, we had a motion made by Councilor Palmucci, seconded by Council Hughes for a positive recommendation. And Council Liang, you are up next to speak. So the floor is yours.
It was, just a brief question, but I was going through the original proposal back in 2001 and there's some really solid conditions in here, you know, with respect to construction hours, drainage improvements, you know, talking about sewer water and drain, signage, lighting requirements, hours of operation, all the above and hiring practices. So, you know, I know that we are just making an amendment to the original one, so I don't want to assume, but I just want to make sure that all of these conditions that were in the original ones still apply with the amendment.
I could respond if...
I'm sorry?
Said I could respond if the public portion of this is still open. I don't think it was.
It is still open.
Yes. We're not proposing to change any of those conditions. They won't apply to the 3.425 acre site. Obviously, that will be redeveloped differently, but they will still apply to Home Depot. There are no requested changes to any of those conditions.
Okay. So, but anything then that gets proposed for that, for the separate site, for the, for the storage facility by R.J. Kelly, so any conditions that are tied to that property will go through the process of planning board to, to understand what conditions will be established, correct?
The, the use is actually allowed by right, but because of the size of the use, it needs a major non-residential use special permit, which is issued by the planning board, and so they will impose the conditions they feel are necessary for that particular use.
That'd be great. Yeah. Again, I just, the conditions that you guys had in here were spectacular and I would love to see them, you know, carried over for the, for the second project on the property. And then I will just echo Council Palmucci's question about the new tax growth that we're going to see in that area. Again, I think the more commercial we can add to, you know, the slate that we do have is going to be great, piece by piece, we're going to get there and, you know, this is a pretty large-scale commercial development, so I'm excited for that. And I know you don't have the numbers here tonight, but it will be helpful to have, oh, do you have those numbers?
I may. I mean, I know Counselor Palmucci does not like math, but we did a calculation and I don't have the exact number, but it's 10 times the current tax rate would be the result of the storage facility.
That's great. Thank you. I, yeah, that's great news. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. We see our attorney, Solicitor Timmons, yes, just Council Liang had some kind of questions or statement. Essentially, all of the conditions that were set forth in the original, well, you can ask.
No, you're, you're doing a great job.
All the conditions...
I went in back to try to listen because we're halfway to having a speaker in the back, so I was trying to hear what was being said. It's something about the conditions from the permit 15 years ago? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah. There's some great conditions in here with respect to, you know, drainage, you know, there's impacts to natural environment, adequacy of utilities, and so, you know, again, I think these are spectacular conditions that were done back in the original agreement back in 2001. And I, my original question, which was answered, if you could elaborate, that'd be great too, I'm not going to stop you, but was just to see if those would carry over to the new projects and it...
You're just trying to confirm that all of that's all set?
That that's not changing, yeah, based off of the changes in front of us.
In order to get the occupancy certificate back when they opened, they would have had to either have met the conditions or agreed to some ongoing plan to meet them, and I know that there would have been enforcement along the way. So the fact that nothing's occurred in, you know, almost two decades they've been open, presume that's all fine.
Yeah. No, they're great conditions. If we can carry them through, I mean, that's a conversation with the planning board, but that would be great, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Timmons. You all set, Council Yang?
Yes. Thank you.
No? Thank you. Council Mahoney?
I just have a couple of questions. So this is, is this going to be four stories? Is that how... Eight, that it's going to be?
Yeah. The storage facility is four stories, about 145,000 square feet. Is that correct?
And what's the average space of the units per unit?
What?
Are they all the same or are they, are they different sizes or...
We are right around 80 to 85 square feet on average.
Are they all the same size or just...
No. No. We provide a pretty wide range of, of sizes.
So I, this is, this is just, just a curious question that I have. I know that we have three current storage facilities in Quincy and you will be the fourth. In a city of the size of 100,000, what's the average for storage facilities? Are we, is this a boom that we're, that we're under? Because this is, seems to be the fastest growing, you know, thing that's happening in Quincy right now. We have, we had one and it was over in the Walston area and then BJ's area opened up one. This will be the second one in Ward Four and then there's one in the point. So I'm just, I'm just trying to understand this business a little bit, just for...
Absolutely. So obviously, we do very in-depth market studies when we go in, going into a new market such as Quincy for us. And we typically measure demand on a square foot of storage per capita. The national average floats around seven, give or take. I think the latest is 7.02 square feet per capita. The state of Massachusetts is roughly around four and a half. The city of Quincy, even with the new facilities, is less than three.
Okay.
So when we studied that, it looked like an opportunity.
So when you, when you do select a location and you obviously selected this location, what, what's the desire for this location? Just out of curiosity, is this, is this prime because it's close to the highway or is it, is there's a, are there reasons for certain locations that they get picked to be put?
Sure. Yeah. I mean, obviously, we look for zone locations, locations that fit the dynamic of storage. In this case, one of the nice parts about storage is on a contributing tax revenue per, I mean, I'll use a sort of a quasi-term, but demand on city resources. It's one of the lowest commercial you can have commercially. So, you know, we provide a lot of tax base without taking a lot from the city. In this case, obviously, everybody knows Bergen Parkway, everybody knows that intersection. The traffic increase here compared to any other sort of commercial development is very de minimis, very small. And it's sort of cut off from the rest of the city also. It's not really a, what I would call a dynamic location.
Yeah.
So it fits storage well. And then also, as you mentioned, access to the highway visibility is also something we look for.
So I, I think, I think Counsel Palmucci said it wasn't the most exciting use for things and I'd say the same thing. It's, it is kind of tucked away in the back area. Many people would wonder why, you know, we talk about residential and I know it was brought up earlier, but, you know, transit-oriented residential units, like why would we want to put it over there? That would add to the traffic and congestion that's over there and nobody know how difficult it is over there. And I understand the tax revenue that's going to bring, but just, just for people to, I know why a lot of people use storage units, but what are the, what are the top five reasons people use storage other than just storing their, their home furnishings if they're moving or the locations? What are other, what are the other potential uses that people might use storage facilities for?
Well, top five might be a little tough, but...
Top three?
I, I'll tell you that about 20% of our business is commercial business, so we, a part of our proposal here is to provide some working office areas for some, some of the users in other locations we get are pharmaceutical representatives who store their, you know, their collateral. So maybe somebody might live in Framingham, but they want to come into Harvard Pilgrim and they want to, you know, show, show them what they're doing, right? So that's something we get realtors, we actually had a furniture company start, they stored all their lumber in one of our units. Lots of e-commerce lately. You know, I know my wife loves Etsy. We have some of those people who store their materials and then store their products. So that's the type of commercial user. We get a lot of transitions, so, you know, two people get married, they may have owned two full households before, they're making one house now, they need temporary storage for that. You know, and then you may have the, the downsizing baby boomer, depending on where you are. You know, they store their heirlooms that they want to give to their kids who might still be in college or high school, but they're just getting a, you know, a smaller home. So those are types of examples.
So, and so when I hear something like that with pharmaceuticals, the only thing I think of is, oh, gosh, what's the, is there any ever, are commercial, is there any, what's the security that you have at a commercial unit? Just out of curiosity, is there any or is there...
Well, the, they're fully gated. Every door has a keypad. We have gates proposed here, gates and fencing, state-of-the-art security systems, cameras